Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this meeting on the seventh of April 2022, City and Nashville Planning Board. Could we get a roll call?
Certainly. Mayor Donjes, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. John Cathy.
Present.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch. Mark Meehan.
Here.
Ben Clements. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a quorum. We're gonna keep moving on with the agenda here. Next up, we have the minutes, approval of minutes from March 24th, 2022 meeting. Anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at these minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they can be accepted as written or need amendments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the March 24th, 2022 Planning Board meeting as written.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Ballinger to accept the minutes from the 24th of March as written. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that motion passes. Next up, we have Communications.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. The following items came after your information was mailed out. Case 822-0016, 100 Northeastern Boulevard, letter from Dave Ferdet, Director of Director of Walden Woods condo association. To Keach Norstrom, stormwater report, and number three memorandum dated April 4th, 2022, Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director, FY 2023 Capital Improvements Program update. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Reporter Chairman Committees and Liaison, any reports from anyone? No, not hearing any? Good. All right. So, moving on with the meeting. Is there anybody here in the audience that's not an applicant or not here for... Okay, so let me just read the procedure of the meeting real quick. So, this is gonna work after each procedure of the meeting, and here is gonna be... I'm gonna start with a legal notice of each conditional special use permit site plan or subdivision being read, and then the next, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, we'll go ahead and start a public hearing, at which time we will hear from the applicant or their representative, and they'll be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant and staff. Next, I'll ask for testimony from the audience, and that could be here in the audience here, or if anybody's on Zoom. I'll first ask if anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan. That'll be the time to come forward to the microphone, or if it's on Zoom to unmute and state any questions or comments you may have for the record. Next, I'll ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan, and the board will have a session to ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. Then, the applicant will also be given a rebuttal period, at which time they can speak to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that everyone keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. The board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in our Nashville Revised Ordinances for Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. I thank everybody at this time for their interest and courteous attention, and ask that if you do have a cellphone, that you go ahead and put it on and vibrate at this time. Okay, so first up, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Next, old business subdivision plans, we have case 821-0177 that's tabled from an earlier meeting that will continue to be tabled at this point until?
May 19th.
May 19th? Okay. I think we already...
We made a motion.
We already did that, right?
Yeah.
All right, so no requirement, no motion there. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits. So, this is Agenda Item 822-0016. This is 1987 Tamposi Limited Partnership and Ballinger Property and BT Realty Owner, Beto Auto Sales applicant. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed conditional use permit to allow for a change of use to an automotive, storage, sales, and office space. This property is located at 100 and L. Northeastern Boulevard. So, for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Just one point of clarification, just so nobody thinks it's a typo or anything. I'm in no way related to the applicant. There is a slightly different spelling on the last name.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Motion regarding jurisdiction, anyone?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business, case 822-0016, property L and 100 Northeastern Boulevard.
Okay, thanks. So, we have that motion to take jurisdiction of 822-0016. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, so we have someone from the representing the applicant who wants to present?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Chisholm. I'm with Keach Norstrom Associates. We're the engineers and surveyors of record for the project. We're representing the applicant, Beto Auto Sales, as they seek approval of conditional use permit to allow automotive sales at 100 Northeastern Boulevard. The existing sites consist of two separate parcels totaling about 3.6 acres in area. The site is situated in the PI Park Industrial Zoning District, south and west of the Northeastern Boulevard and Pittsburgh Avenue intersection. It is surrounded by a variety of different industrial, commercial, and residential users on the neighboring properties. Those include New Power Worldwide, Domino's Pizza, TJ's Deli, A&amp;E Coffee &amp; Tea to the north. On the east side, Lansing Building Products, which is a big industrial site, to the southeast, a building containing a sign store and a beauty salon, and then further to the southeast, and also to the south, a couple residential developments in Canterbury Woods and Walden Woods. And then directly on the west, another industrial user in Ferguson Plumbing Supply. In the past, the site has had a history of different industrial users dating back from the 1960s up until about 2005, according to city records. Since then, it really hasn't had a day-to-day user. My understanding is the current owner stores vehicles in the building in the garage end, which is kind of the easterly, if you look at the picture there, the light brown roof section of the building. But again, today, not necessarily a day-to-day user in there. Beto Auto Sales is looking to move into the facility. They currently operate an automotive dealership in London Dairy and are looking to expand into the Nashville market. They're looking to expand not only their sales locations, but also they need more area to actually store vehicles. It's something I think I've seen a lot recently with some of my dealership clients, where they need more space for that sort of activity, and that's one of the reasons why this site was so attractive to them. What they intend to do is occupy about 25% of the building with commercial space. According to the Land Use Code, the commercial space is automotive sales, and industrial use in the building, which would be the remainder of the building, is vehicle storage. They aren't gonna lease the whole building. The owner is gonna retain kind of that last chunk of the building to, again, garage his own vehicles, I guess. And to the exterior, there's also gonna be new display areas, which are the dotted hatches you can see on the plan, kind of up on the Northeastern Boulevard frontage. And then to the rear, there's another different hatch signifying the vehicle storage area, where they'll obviously be unloading and getting those cars ready for display and sale and that sort of thing. The remainder of the site's basically just parking. That's gonna be used, obviously, for customer and employee parking, and then really the only site improvements that we have outside of the building consist of, like, signage and striping, and so it's very minimal in the exterior. The Land Use Code identifies automotive sales, as I mentioned, as commercial; vehicle storage as industrial, and allows that 25% commercial use conditionally, pending that you meet the nine specific criteria. We've submitted a letter and narrative outlining those nine. I don't know if it's typical for you for me to read them into the record or kind of summarize them, or if you've all had a chance to review it and go into detail , however.
I don't think you need to read them into the record. We have them in the...
Okay.
...in the packet as a record. So, if any of the board has questions, I'll just ask you.
Sounds good. In addition to the CUP, we're also asking for a waiver for NRO Section 19279 EE. That's a pretty common waiver. I know you folks see a lot. It's the existing features within 1,000 feet of the site. Obviously, for a project like this, it's just hardship on the client to provide something that really doesn't add a benefit for a change of use and conditional use permit. So, again, I submitted a letter to that effect. Happy to talk about that in more detail. I should also note that the applicant met one of the neighbors from Walden Woods on-site last week. That particular neighbor had some concerns. I understand they had a very productive discussion, and that is the correspondence that you received, I think, last week sometime, which is actually speaking in favor of the project. I guess his concerns have been addressed. We did receive also a engineering review letter from DPW last week. We were able to address a number of Joe Mandola's comments in the last plan revision, as well as provide a stormwater management report, and fully resubmitted a letter kind of responding to each of his comments. That just got in today. I know he obviously hasn't had a chance to look at it, so, you know, probably a little bit more coordination there to do. I think he might be looking for some additional striping and potentially signage for kind of ingress and egress to the site, but obviously we're more than happy to work with him through that. And then, another item that was submitted by the applicant is a declaration that's notarized from the applicant stating that they're very well aware of the conditional use permit requirements to have no more than 25% commercial space as vehicle sales. They're not gonna be bringing people through the car storage areas. Those cars really aren't gonna be ready for sale, that sort of thing. So, they're aware of it. It's a discussion we've had with staff and with the applicant, and they're very comfortable with that fact. Lastly, we've also had a chance to review the staff report. Take no exception to any of the conditions there. And so, with that being said, I think they're just looking very much forward to being in Nashville and kind of bringing a little bit of life back to this property, being a good tenant. They've already painted the building. They're looking forward to getting a landscaper in there, sprucing the place up, you know, and having it be well-maintained while they operate there. So, with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thanks. I'll pass it off to the board. Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant? Not seeing any questions here at the board level. I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, or even in favor of the plan? Sure. Go ahead, come on. Yeah, just make sure you state your name and address for the record, and then...
John Sullivan, 30 Holbrook Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire. I'm actually the Ward Nine Alderman, and I wanted to come out tonight to speak in support of this. The resident that you referred to at the beginning of the meeting, he called me and let me know about this project and the fact that the client did speak with him directly, so I wanted to come and speak in favor of this, and I appreciate the action that you took. So, that was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody on Zoom? Nobody on. Okay. All right. At this point, I'll give the board one more opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing. Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, yes, my apologies if this has already been stated, but there's a reference to the Fire Marshal's letter. Is there a date that we should cite?
Unfortunately, not, not at this point.
Do we...
Have you spoken with the fire?
They gave some initial feedback, but I don't know if they were planning to do more, but if that's reworded to say any forthcoming comments or something like that, we're happy to reach out again and coordinate further.
I'd personally be amenable to that. I just don't know if we had something.
Yeah, usually pretty good.
Okay. Yeah, so we can edit it that way if we need to.
I would just note that there was initial coordination with the fire department about the use, particularly the indoor storage of the vehicles, and so perhaps because of that coordination, it may have... Their comments may have been lost in the shuffle, so they didn't have any clear objections to the project, but we'll certainly ask for written confirmation of that.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? Okay. Hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. So, we move into the meeting here, so pretty... Seems like a pretty straightforward application to me for a conditional use permit. Couple... Only one waiver, which is, again, pretty typical for a limited, almost very limited site work here that's being proposed. Does anybody have any discussion points, Mr. Ballinger?
Just in general, Mr. Chair, I'm very familiar with the area. It is sort of a hodgepodge of different uses. I feel very comfortable that the neighbors to the south are comfortable with this, that that will probably be the most stark contrast, just an impact to the residential area, but I think overall it's relatively consistent with a variety of uses that are currently present on Northeastern Boulevard.
Okay. Anybody else?
I was gonna...
Mr. Man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we got the letter, I was, okay, here we go. They're supporting it. How great. It's nice to see that, and that the developers are working with you better so well.
Okay. Great. Anybody else? All right, Mr. Hirsch.
It's a good use for the area. The building's vacant for, like, say, 15 years or whatever. It's, I think, would improve the whole ambiance of the area.
Yeah, agreed. Okay. All right. Anybody wanna make a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business case 822-0016, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plan NRO Section 190-133F, subject to six conditions. First is with respect to a waiver of Section 190-279EE pertaining to survey limits or existing conditions, shall read "is granted will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation." Stipulation number two, as written in the staff report. Stipulation three shall be amended to read as follows. Prior to the chair signing the plan, all forthcoming comments from Mark Paglia, Nashville Fire Marshal's Office, shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the Nashville Fire Department. Stipulations four through six, as written in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. So, we have that motion to approve case number 822-0016 with these six stipulations as stated. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper? Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Can we take a two-minute break?
Yep, sure. So, while we're in break, maybe someone make sure to take a look at the tentative agenda. That's the next item, so.
Wow.
That's a guy that signed a lot of things.
Watch out for the politician. You freaked out the neighbors.
That's right. We got punished because we had to sit in the task force meetings until probably 1:38. No, I think I got home.
Gotta do it.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes it's fun, like, if you're...
Yeah, I don't know where that... So, we'll continue on. Next up in the agenda of the business is the review of the tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Has anybody on the board had a chance to review the technical review meeting minutes? Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have had the opportunity to review technical review agenda, and based on that review, I would make a motion that there are no proposals of regional impact.
Okay, so we have that motion that there are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, next up, we have the referrals from the Board of Aldermen and proposed petition by Edstone Properties for full waiver of in-back fees. This is for the Thompson Preserve condo, and I assume we can hear these both together, yeah, because they're just... They're the same petitioner, right, and just two different properties, so I'm fine hearing those as I... Together, if we've got somebody that wants to present on that, that'd be great. Thanks.
A little better. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Wyner Bennett, 111 Concord Street in Nashville, and I represent Edstone Properties, Inc. Dave Petropolis of Edstone Properties is also with me. We appreciate you conducting tonight's hearing on these two petitions. Maybe just give you a little bit of background about the properties and the ordinance for which we're seeking the petition for a waiver of the public school impact fees. Edstone Properties was founded in 1984. Since that time, nearly 40 years, has built a number of homes and residential communities in Nashville and surrounding towns, including so-called Housing for Older Persons or Elderly Housing communities. So, about a month ago, we filed two petitions with the Board of Aldermen to seek full waiver of the school impact fees for both the two properties the chair noted, Thompson's Preserve condominium on Gilson Road, and the completion, if you will, of Walden Woods condominium off Exit 5. The portion that Edstone built was known as the Alcove at Walden Woods condominium. Thompson Preserve contains 39 detached units in condominium form of ownership. Walden Woods, the Alcove's portion is 63 units in a multifamily structure. These petitions are filed under Section 190-85 of the Land Use Code, and what that provision states is that any applicant may petition the Board of Aldermen for a full or partial waiver of the fee for public capital educational facilities, the school impact fee, when the proposed development consists of lower moderate income housing or elderly housing, which can reasonably be expected not to require additional educational facilities. Both these applications pertain to housing for older persons, elderly housing. They're both 55 and older communities, and what that means is, as the board has heard before in other cases, in a 55 and older community under state and federal law, 80% of the units, at least 80% of the units, have to have at least one person who's age 55 or older living in them. Sort of by their nature, these communities, because of that demographic requirement and the nature of the way in which they're designed, tend not to have school-aged children, few if any. It's typical. These two communities have either a community building or a community area that facilitates programs, socializing, other activities that are targeted for this age demographic. So, with the petitions, we submitted a study by Mark Fugier, Fugier Planning and Development, dated February 22, 2022 this year. Mr. Fugier took a survey of various age-restricted communities in southern New Hampshire, four of which are in Nashville, two of which are the ones before you tonight. And his study revealed that over 1,036 total units in these communities that he surveyed, there were only five school-aged children. So, roughly speaking, five school-aged children for every 1,000 or so units in the age-restricted communities. He noted that neither of the two before you tonight had any school-aged children in them. So, as I mentioned, given the age requirement in a 55 and older community and the nature in which they're typically designed, which is usually a single-floor living, whether it be in a multifamily structure or in a detached structure, tends to not generate school-aged children living in the properties. The Alcove at Walden Woods had a little different wrinkle to it as well. Its condominium requirements and its condominium documentation mandates that 100% of the units be 50... At least one 55 and older resident in it. The standard is 80%, which is the one that's applicable across the board by state law. So, I think it is respectfully noted that, given the experience that Mr. Fugier's survey indicates, given the nature of the communities, given the experience that this board has seen on these communities in the past, we think we meet the standard for the waiver in full of the school impact fee, because five school-aged children out of a census of 1,000 or so units and none in either of these communities certainly does not generate the need for capital improvements and capital additions to the school system. So, we submit it's appropriate that the petitions be granted. Of course, impact fees, as the board is well aware, ought to be rationally related to what a project has for impact on off-site facilities and off-site infrastructure in the city. Certainly, in these cases, these particular communities don't impact the school system to generate the need for capital improvements. Edstone has already paid the fees associated with the school impact requirement. It's typically paid upfront, if you will, and the waiver and refund is what's sought after the fact, and that's why we filed the petition. So, we would respectfully request that the board give a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen for the passage of the petitions. Thank you, and happy to answer questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks. So, any questions, Mr. Riley?
Yeah, just... And this is really a hypothetical question, but I just wanted to understand sort of procedurally how this would work. So, if in theory, you know, so if we were to make a favorable recommendation in the Board of Aldermen, we're ultimately to grant the waiver, if the use were to change materially over time, such that, you know, the census of school-aged children, you know, was not the basic... The zero that it is now in the two facilities that are related here, but some significant number, I mean, is there an opportunity for the city to revisit the issue once the waiver is granted, or is it once the waiver is granted, it's... That's it?
I think once it's granted, that's it. I believe that's the case.
Mr. Man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I tried to read this very carefully because I'm being cognizant that this is coming from the Aldermen and that there's a specific parameter that we are to engage in this. So, I wanna be... I wanna ask questions that aren't relevant to the plan.
Yeah, I mean, generally, our role is a... We provide a recommendation to the Aldermen. We're not an approver of this or anything, but the Aldermen seek our input. They can follow it, or they don't have to follow it. But, yeah, that's our role in this.
May I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Specifically to it. So, one question I have is, what is the revenue loss that would be anticipated by granting a waiver like this?
I think it's in the report. It was...
It's just under $20,000, it looks like.
Or per one.
That was one.
Yeah.
And, if I may... I'm looking at the website for the developments, you know, 349,900 for each unit, you know, the basic units. It would seem that this waiver is looking to benefit the developer as opposed to the people who are actually buying the units?
That's correct. It's developers, the applicant, the developer is the party that paid the fees when certificates of occupancy were issued on each unit.
And then, you know, my other thought is that we're really granting a waiver to a developer to increase their margin on a development, most of whom... to a developer to increase their margin on a development, most of whom, I would assume, the residents have benefited or are currently benefiting from public education. They either attended, or their grandkids are in there, and it just struck me as, why would we waive those fees when we are building a new middle school, we have renovations in the middle schools happening all over the city? My wife's a public school teacher, and they just got a new contract. I mean, there's not, like, a plethora of money flowing through that system. And so by granting this, as I understand it, we're taking fifty thousand dollars out of the budget of the public school system to grant, to benefit the developer who's going to increase this margin on these units?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
I think two questions you posed, and the second one, the money, as I understand it, but anyone who's familiar with the school system, budgeting can correct me, the money was paid by the developer at the time of certificate occupancy issuance for each of these units. So it goes theoretically, I guess, into a capital improvements fund, not an operating budget number. It would come back to the developer presumably out of that fund. But on your first point, the notion of the residents who live there, whether they be fifty-six years old or eighty-six years old, benefited from public education, most, perhaps many did, certainly. But the regulation that we're seeking the waiver from, Section one ninety-eight-five of the Land Use Code, it's not based on the benefit that the residents at a community may have received in the past from a public school system. It's whether or not this project impacts the public school system in the context of needing capital improvements. And it's really no different, in a way, than any other off-site impact analysis that you make. A project has to have a rational connection to the infrastructure of the city that it's impacting in order to be assessed an impact fee. So, for example, if I built a ten-lot subdivision out in the west, southwest section of the city that's not on public sewer, you couldn't, you couldn't impose a sewer impact fee on me if I'm never going to tie into that system, if you see what I mean. It's because there's no rational connection to what I'm doing versus the infrastructure element. The same would be for a road improvement on North Nashua on a three-lot subdivision in the southwest quadrant. So really, that's the standard. And that notion of rational connection for the impact to the infrastructure element is what's stated in Section one ninety-eight-five of the Land Use Code. The code is really just stating the state law of there must be a rational connection in effect. So that's why I believe we meet the standard.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Mr. Ballinger.
This would actually be a question for staff. Again, not trying to get too hypothetical, but I'm looking at Section one ninety-seven, computation of impact fees, and it breaks it down by type of housing, detached, single, manufactured, et cetera, et cetera. Fifty-five-plus or age-restricted does not appear to be specifically called out. And I guess what I'm trying to understand, we have two cases potentially here tonight, two properties. What other properties could this affect, and would it have made more sense if the Aldermen perhaps wanted to issue a blanket resolution or change the code? I guess I'm just trying to, I understand the argument, but it would seem to me that this, there's potential for other properties in the city to pursue the waiver, and I don't know if it's more efficient for the Aldermen to make some more large-scale change potentially, rather than us trying to weigh in on a case-by-case basis.
A few questions, I think, to respond to there. Number one being that the Table seventy-seven-one, which refers to the fee per, fee based on the form of the development, is directly tied to the form because the form dictates the theoretical amount of school children being contributed to the education system. That being that a multifamily unit is much less likely to contribute three children versus a single-family detached dwelling unit that's very likely to contribute more children to the school system. And so that's why the form is the basis of the computation for the impact fee. And that's why you don't see elderly housing there, though it could be added, and therefore, the fee could be substantially less than the other forms of development there. That said, I think what you're getting at is a potential revision to the code that would essentially exempt elderly housing from any payment of impact fee. I think that's something worth exploring. I think it's contemplated by the waiver provision that's within the section that the appellant or the applicant is referring to, but that ultimately gives the discretion to the planning board to submit written findings to the Board of Aldermen. Perhaps that subjective analysis should be removed, and a simple exemption should be provided, but that's not what the current ordinance provides for.
The only other thing I'd add is, just for everybody on the board to remember is, the purpose of the planning board is related to evaluating stuff in front of us with respect to the land use and the master plan. We aren't here to make policies that an Aldermanic chamber would do, nor even really judge on those. That's not the function of this board. So this comes up a lot when, you know, if the city wants to buy a piece of property. And I often see folks on the board try to calculate in their head whether the property's worth the dollars. That's actually not our role to figure out. Our role is, as this petition or referral or whatever's in front of us relates to land use and the land use guidelines, does it make sense to us? So I always caution anybody on the board on trying to look at any of these referrals as if we are an Alderman or an elderly woman. That isn't our role here. So you certainly have your own personal input, and you can use it however you want. There's nothing wrong with that. But I would encourage everybody who's sitting here in this forum to think more with the land use, land use codes and guidelines interpretation, and provide that. The Aldermen are looking for, what does the planning board, who are, you know, the ones that look at land use, master plans, things like that, think about it. It isn't generally their, our role to provide to them whether we think certain dollar values and budgets are, I mean, that's just generally our, I don't know if you can comment on that, Matt, but it's-
I would agree.
Always find that hard with these referrals. What hat are you, do you have on right now?
I would agree. The one caveat I would add, though, is the impact fee is uniquely, it's a unique referral, in the sense that the planning board does play a more active role in the decision as to whether a waiver of impact fee is provided than I would say for other referrals that the board sees. Back to Mr. Ballinger's question, certainly any elderly housing development or age-restricted housing development could seek a waiver through the planning board. I would openly state that I think perhaps elderly housing should be clearly exempted rather than relying on the applicant to approach the board for a waiver, whereas the low-to-moderate-income exemption is much more subjective, and I think that does require more analysis than simply is something age-restricted or not. So I think this is something that certainly should be looked at. About a year ago, we had actually reviewed the impact fee ordinance. We had done some investigation on this. And I would just note that the current impact fees are being used to pay down the bonds for the north and south high school construction. Those were the basis of the impact fee as we look at it today. And so current impact fees that are paid are still being used to pay down the bonds for those projects, albeit a very small portion of those bonds, as those were very substantial efforts.
Chris Hudson?
So, a couple of things. I agree that this referral, basically, it's a referral up or down, you know, based upon the current regulation, but I do think it's helpful to provide input to staff because, you know, they'll be the ones that make recommendations for future changes. So as we come across things that we think maybe the regulations could be improved, or land use code could be improved, I think it's completely, completely okay to mention that to staff for consideration. The other thing I would say, I mean, and staff can clarify, but you mentioned a waiver, requesting a waiver, but that still would be to the Board of Aldermen at that point in time, right? The board cannot waive an impact fee at the time of application. Is that true?
When you say the board, you're referring to the-
The, this board.
That's correct.
Public Works cannot waive the impact fee. It would need to be-
That's correct.
But that could be done at the time of application rather than, or, you know, concurrent with it, rather than now after the fact, where the fee's been paid and it will be refunded.
Correct.
If we, if the board so chooses.
Alderman, Kath?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note, I did the math. So between the two developments, it's four hundred and ninety dollars per unit, just on the record, if you divide it to fifty thousand. I did want to ask, how many years have those developments been around and been paying those fees?
I may have to look to Mr. Petropolis, but both projects are relatively recent. And if I look over, and he will nod, I believe that both have been completed within the last three to four years or less.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, just make sure you state your name and address for the record.
David Petropolis. My business address is one seventy-nine Amherst Street. I'm with Edstone Properties. Thompson's Preserve, our last closing there was May of two thousand twenty-one. And Walden Woods, our last closing was November of two thousand twenty-one. So they're recently completed.
Okay, thank you. I had another question.
Sure, go ahead. Yep.
In your study of how many school-aged children are attending school, how many children would have to be in those developments for there to not be a waiver, like where you would not seek one because there are so many school-aged children living in the developments?
I'm not sure there's a number in terms of a bright line. I think the question is, as it would be with any development, is the, does the number of children have a marginal impact on the school district in which they would be going, such that that coupled with other anticipated developments, if you will, or increases in housing units, would cause the need for a capital improvement? So it's sort of, when do you hit the tipping point, I think, is the basic analysis on any impact fee approach. The planning board, not to go too far afield, but you, when you see site plans before you, for example, you very often analyze whether or not a commercial project, industrial project, a retail plaza is going to impact traffic, or is it going to impact water sewer infrastructure. You get studies submitted to you, you analyze them, and then you come to reasonable judgments as to whether they do. And if they do, you have the ability to impose, and either the obligation to improve the infrastructure or pay towards that improvement, for example. In this case, is an, sort of, unique element of the Land Use Code that automatically imposes the school impact fee, but then creates the waiver capability, as Mr. Sullivan was saying. So you have no choice but to impose the impact fee. The developer has the choice, either seek its waiver or live with it. And it's been pretty clear before both this board and the Board of Aldermen, in a good number of occasions, that the fifty-five and older communities have applied for and typically received the waiver because of this minimal impact on the school system. The few numbers of school-aged children that just, by census, just don't exist in these communities that have that impact. So lastly, just if you, if the school impact fee was analyzed in the same way as you would on any particular project, and it wasn't codified so specifically in the Land Use Code, then you would probably go through that analysis, that tipping point analysis.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
I'd like to seek a point of clarification that perhaps Matt Sullivan could answer this for me. When I look at proposal, petition by Edstone Properties for a full waiver of impact fees for public school facilities, so that would be, Edstone would be getting a discount on taxes, and what about the residents who live there now?
The discount would be applied to Edstone. They were the initial payer of the impact fee, as I understand it, and so therefore, they would be reimbursed. The reimbursements would not be applied to the residents. The impact fee had already been paid by the developer prior to their occupancy.
So the residents would still be paying what they've typically been paying?
That's correct.
If it just was approved.
That's correct.
It would only be Edstone who would get the break?
Correct.
Thank you.
Edstone took on the burden of the initial impact fee payment, and therefore, they would receive the benefit of the reimbursement.
Yeah, just to clarify, that's a, that's a one-time fee. It's not, it's not an annual-
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have clarified that.
During the development, yeah. Right. Mr. Hirsch?
Mr. Chairman, historically, have these waivers been granted before other complexes in the city, or is this just, because I can't recall any of them coming before us a couple of years I've been on the board.
There is certainly history to support prior waivers, yes.
Have most of the complexes in the past gotten these waivers?
Of elderly housing complexes? I can't speak to that. I'm not certain. That's based on my lack of history. Apologies. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay. All right. So our role here, again, is a motion on a referral, and basically, you have kind of options for a favorable referral or an unfavorable or a favorable comments. It's kind of free-form, but they are, they are actually, you know, just referrals. Mr. Meehan?
Do you want to motion?
If, do you want to go in forward? We'll certainly consider it. Mr. Barley?
It's more of a notation that's familiar with this conversation. I will say that there are some members of the board who do put a lot of emphasis on the recommendations that come from this board, because they trust you guys, and myself included, to do the legwork. And so if you do feel like there should be a notation that goes with that recommendation, I would strongly recommend that, so they have some context rather than just an up or down. Because more than likely, if they just see an up, they'll just go with the up, and, you know, vice versa. So if there's some context, if someone wanted to motion it and say, I would like this to be noted for the board, that would probably also be helpful, so we can figure that out when we get there.
Yeah, and you can certainly pass that one. Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I just, in, just before we get to hearing the motion, I just, I just want to say for the record, I mean, I do think that the applicant here has established, you know, a valid basis for the waiver. And I think Attorney Westgate did a very good job of sort of describing, you know, both the purpose of the impact fees and why it would be reasonable for the applicant to ask for a waiver here, where, you know, it's not, it's not a question, Mr. Meehan, that we've got, you know, that distinction right, as opposed to the, you know, the question of whether the development is benefiting from, you know, the school facilities existing versus whether it's burdening them. So I just wanted to say that for the record. I think, I think they've established a valid basis, and so I would certainly be in favor of making a favorable recommendation. The only other thing I want to say is, in the context of the discussion that we were having about, you know, Mr. Ballinger raised, about some sort of blanket waiver, the only thing I would say there is, if, you know, in my view, if the Board of Aldermen were considering some sort of, you know, broader waiver for elderly housing, I do think it should be within, with some sort of metric or standard around it, you know, understanding that in most cases, it's going to be unlikely that elderly housing is going to have any significant number of school children. It seems to me that there should be some consideration given to the fact, or given to the possibility that there could be exceptions to that. So I thought I would just add that to the extent that we're offering that to the Board of Aldermen as well.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ballinger?
If I may just add quickly to Mr. Barley's comment, I think, if I had to parse my words more carefully, I would probably just make the suggestion that Section one ninety-seven perhaps be revisited by the Board of Aldermen, and there may be a way to more particularly refine or define what types of units and what exceptions that they think are appropriate. Because right now, I don't see anything explicitly for fifty-five-plus, for elderly, or what possible exceptions there may be to those properties. I think that's where the rub lies a little bit with me, at least that's my personal opinion. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Peterson?
I have a couple thoughts about this. And one is, well, we're not really talking about benefiting the fifty-five-plus members of that- And one is, uh, well, we're not really talking about benefiting the fifty-five plus members of that community. We're talking about benefiting Etchstone Properties. And my thought is Etchstone Properties, along with every other corporate entity, benefits from having a well-educated populace. And to be taking money away from our school system, whether it's a uh, a facility or infrastructure or capital improvement or teachers, um, doesn't help uh, the overall education of members of our society. So therefore, I think uh, having a well-funded school system with everybody paying into it is better for us all. So I am not in favor of giving the tax break to Etchstone Properties.
Mr. Meehan?
So the uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion I was going to present to you would be to approve it.
Okay.
While I agree with.
It would wouldn't be an approval, remember, because we don't like a you do like a favorable or.
A favorable.
Positive referral.
Referral.
Yeah, yeah.
While I agree with you very much, I think it's clear that the land use code is such that this is approved, right? And and I appreciate Mr. Bollinger's point about the potential for the Alderman to revisit it. But I think and and hearing, I learn every time I'm in one of these meetings, right? Which is great. Hearing the clarification from our chair about having to apply the set codes, it seems very clear that um, this should, this makes a lot of sense and it should be approved. It fits within the code that we established, that we are engaging. So I was going to make a motion to positively recommend.
Okay. Yeah, and I would I would specifically state both of them, just for the record, because there is two in front of us here.
Sorry, could I just, I I just wanted to speak briefly to Mr. Peterson's comment. I because I, again, I understand sort of what you're saying in terms of, you know, sort of the the benefit that would accrue to the public school system. But I I just, you know, I think two things. One, I mean, we're we're not talking about a a property tax issue, right? It's so I just, I want to clarify, I mean, we're talking about this, you know, uh, special impact fee. I mean, it's it's no different than any other application that, you know, we talk about a contribution to the traffic fund, right? I mean, it's not, it's not a property tax assessment. So we're not, we're not changing the, you know, the basis on which any of the the units would pay property tax. So, but I think the other thing is, again, which I think Attorney Westgate sort of made the point is, you know, the the impact fee is 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 very specifically tailored to is the development placing a burden on a public service that that therefore justifies the fee? So it's not really a question of are the are the residents of the development benefiting from the public school system? It's a question of whether whether that development is impacting the public school system in a way that would justify applying the fee. And so I I I think that's the basis on which the applicant is arguing for the waiver. And again, in my view, has, you know, justified the basis for the waiver.
Mr. Peterson?
Getting back to Mr. Bollinger's comments about um, the actual um, section one ninety dash eighty-five, did you say it wasn't clear that it was specific for age fifty-five and plus? Age fifty-five and above?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I I think, I believe, I don't want to parse the 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 codes incorrectly. I think um, the code Mr. Peterson just cited was the process with regard to the process by which you request a waiver. I I referred to section one ninety dash seventy-seven, which actually lays out the foundation for the computation of of the impact fees. So I I I'm not going to start talking lawyer, but um, I I think I think it's two separate things. I I think Attorney Westgate was citing the 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 section of the law, their city code whereby they can make this appeal. And I was just referencing the stipulation in the code that computates the fee, so.
Mr. Hertz?
Further to Mr. Bollinger's input, I think uh, making a broader statement about revisiting table uh, seventy-seven dash one is appropriate, not only to exclude, uh, potentially exclude elderly housing from the computation, but maybe to review the actual computation for the other uses because the school is engaged, I mean, the city's engaged in significant school projects and will be, you know, significant school bonds associated. And I'm not sure when these uh, rates were set, but it it's potentially appropriate to modify them given the the conditions that, uh, you know, the conditions that the the city is going forward with. So I don't I don't think that needs to be specifically in any kind of a recommendation other than, um, you know, revisit revisit uh, one ninety seventy-seven and uh, as to u- uses potentially exempt and or fees calculated or something to that effect.
Mr. Meehan, you want to make your motion?
Want to give a shot? Oh, you want to give a shot? Let's do it. I move, we provide a positive recommendation for old business item number two, pertaining to the petition by Etchstone Properties for a full waiver of impact fees as authorized under section one ninety dash eighty-five of the land use code and other business number three, proposed petition by Etchstone Properties for full waiver impact fees as authorized under section one ninety eighty-five of the land use code for the ALCO. Should I distinguish those both or?
I I think if you, other business number three is fine.
Okay, other business three.
Defines it, yeah.
And include a suggestion that Alder- that the Alderman revisit table seventy-seven dash one of the impact fees. I I don't know, I didn't want to say too much about that because that's really up to them.
Yeah, and I think our our minutes are available to them, so they can.
I'll make sure they know.
Read through any. You've got, the Alderman's sitting beside you too.
Inside track.
Who can provide further clarification for the group, I think, as well.
Okay, is that is that sufficient?
Is it the right table, though?
It is. I I do wonder whether the stipulation should be should be direct, though, about, you know, I hear in your house, it's concerned that we do require a comprehensive review, but tonight it's been specific that we should look at whether elderly housing should be included within table seventy-seven one. And I don't want to insert words into any motion makers now, but that's what I'm hearing.
May I accept it as a friendly amendment?
Sure.
To our motion?
Sure, sure. I'll take that.
Yeah, because that's really the issue.
So we have that motion on these two items by Alderman, Meehan, for favorable recommendations.
No Alderman.
Board of Alderman. Or, excuse me, Mr. Meehan.
That was a problem at the beginning.
Kind of jacked them up there. So do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board?
One one more bit.
Go ahead, Mr. Hertz.
So I I personally am not a resident in Nashua, but I do not believe elderly housing is excluded from paying the school portion of the property taxes. So, I mean, although this fee is getting waived and the potentially future would for a use, similar use, should the board change that? I mean, it it should be recognized that um, the these residents will still continue to support the school system through continued payment of school portion of of their tax bill.
True. Okay, great. Uh, other discussion?
Yes, you asked if there's any more discussion?
Yep.
Yeah, uh, so I I am concerned that are a question that I have. Are we setting a precedent that um, any business that doesn't have anything to do with the school systems can now ask for for waivers on their on their impact fees? They can say, why can't we do it?
Because there's the one ninety dash eighty-five only allows certain uses essentially to have access to the waiver.
Correct.
So if that development, because it's not really a business thing, it's a development thing, has act is is consistent with the the allowances within one ninety dash eighty-five, they can ask. Is that correct as I'm reading it?
That's correct.
So yeah, there's not, that's not an open blanket for anybody in one ninety dash eighty-five. That's a specific list of, and elderly housing is in that list of, right?
Correct, and this this has been on the, this has been on the books, if you will, for more than twenty years. And there, I just did some research, there have been several instances where developers have requested waiver of the fee. There has not been a proliferation of fee requests made. Some have been granted, though.
So you're saying that list is already defined.
There is already a precedent.
Twenty years.
I would say there is a precedent for granting the fee in accordance with that applicable section of the code.
Alderman, Kathy?
To your point, uh, eighty-five does state, among other things, if the proposed new development consists of low or moderate income housing or elderly housing, which can reasonably, can be reasonably expected not to require additional educational facilities. So it's very narrow and you could approve it and send it to us and we could just say no anyway.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's layers of protection. If if all of a sudden this opens a floodgates of waivers, the Board of Alderman's going to be like, all right. And we probably then would definitely revisit the land use code and start setting up some barriers to make sure it's even more complete, so.
Ms. Harper?
I I just have a question. It says elderly housing is age fifty-five considered elderly? I guess because I'm over fifty, you know, I'm built. But I mean, you say fifty-five, I don't think elderly. And I know people having children in their forties, so I'm a little concerned about that definition.
The law is offensive.
I I'm I'm concerned about it. It just says elderly.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bollinger?
I'm sorry, I think to to Ms. Harper's point, I I think there is a distinction between age restricted and elderly. And I don't want to, again, start parsing the language, but I think the age restricted, which is typically the fifty-five plus dictates that you have to have one or more persons on the lease or occupying the unit that is age fifty-five or above. So I believe uh, that doesn't mean that you're elderly. It just means that you've met, you've met the age restriction requirement of living that 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 lifestyle.
That lifestyle.
Save the day.
Take that as it is.
Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, just briefly, the the elderly housing portion of the ordinance that governs elderly housing uses was actually recodified several years ago to reflect it as housing for older persons to get at very much what you're talking about. Unfortunately, when that was done, other references within the code were not adjusted to reflect that. And so we we certainly don't want to be discriminatory in our language towards anyone. But really, this this should refer to housing for older persons and within the ordinance, that is defined as age fifty-five and over.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, so we have the motion, we had a second, right? All right, okay, so all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any questions? No? So that motion passes, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, last up on our um, other business is the referral of the FY twenty twenty-two capital improvements program. Somebody, you've seen this before. Matt, were you gonna just kind of quickly sort of review what that is? So sure, you know, summarize it and uh,
Yep.
If anybody has any questions, obviously I sit, I'm the chair of that committee because I'm happy to answer any questions as well, so.
Mr. Chair, we have to provide a very brief overview. This is, I would start by saying, this is one is the only true working committee of the planning board that exists. And so that working committee, the CIP committee, is charged with forming an annual, yet six-year term capital improvement plan for the city of Nashua. This plan you see typically between the months of March and April of each year, of each fiscal year. And these recommendations from the CIP plan are actually forwarded to the mayor and Board of Alderman in the effort to provide context and recommendation to the capital planning process that happens each year as part of the budgeting process. I would just clarify for the record at the end, the attendees did, this is the FY twenty twenty-two plan. This is actually the FY twenty twenty-three
Yep.
Plan that you are considering this evening. I would just note for the record that ultimately, efforts briefly briefly talk about the process, I would request that you provide favorable recommendation. Specifically, you actually approved and recommended going up to the Board of Alderman for the position as well as the mayor. This year was particularly challenging for a variety of reasons.
We transitioned to a new process, a new software for the capital improvement process. Both department heads, division directors.
The mayor and also, uh, I would say the committee members adjusting quite well to that.
Were able to work very well with the system that we used. We have transitioned to a digital.
Again, challenging times. That's part of the reason why interviewing this recommendation in April as opposed to March when you traditionally see. As I mentioned before, the primary intent of the plan is to.
Inform the capital budgeting process that goes through the mayor and Board of Alderman. Ultimately, the planning board's recommendation will proceed to those two bodies subsequent to this and they will consider their investments as part of the subsequent annual budgeting process. As I noted within the memo, fifteen of the fifty-three submitted projects that have thus far received a rating of A-one from the committee. What that really means is that those projects are essential in nature and that they must be or the recommendation is that they should be completed as soon as possible. I would be very, uh, I think blunt about the fact that in many cases, only a few of those projects will ultimately be funded as part of the capital process. Some may be funded through grants later in the year, but the funding is limited. So I don't want you, I would ask you to align the recommendation of those fifteen projects as A-one with the availability of funding. There's not always a one-to-one match, but the capital for these charged is to evaluate what are the most important projects based on the presentation to the department and those rise to the top of the list. Obviously, behind those fifteen projects that rose to A-one, there were another thirty-eight projects that received a variety of different recommendations, ranging from A-two down to a D-rating as part of the process and a C-rating. These A-one projects were specifically, and I won't read through them unless there's a request to do so, they were specifically identified in the memo provided to you ranging from Spruce Street Connector Cap Project all the way down to the Library Facility Sub项Project. As I mentioned, these improvements range, I didn't mention this, but these improvements are those fifty thousand dollars or greater in cost to the city. That's what raises the level of capital improvement. In total, the plan recommended following investments for the twenty twenty-three plan. Total long-term project recommendations, those that are multi-year, there were nine point eight million dollars a project recommended. For short-term project recommendations, there were twenty-two point nine million dollars of projects recommended, resulting in an overall project recommendation of thirty-two, thirty-two million in session. Additionally, the CIP does consider solid waste and wastewater enterprise-funded projects. Those are obviously done outside of the traditional. Tax impact and are instead funded by user fees through the solid waste and wastewater systems. In total, the recommended projects from those two funds were seven million for the solid waste enterprise fund projects and eight point two million dollars for wastewater enterprise fund projects, resulting in a total enterprise fund project recommendation of fifty-two million dollars. Again, recognizing that although those are part of the project recommendations, those will not ultimately be the allocations from the mayor and the Board of Alderman and of course the budgeting process. Happy to answer your questions about specific projects that were included in the plan, but I want to, again, thank not only the committee, but also the department heads, division directors and others who were involved in presenting these projects.
Thanks. So I'll just add on to the process, for those of you who aren't in it, um, the departments themselves prioritize essentially their top three projects and present those to the committee. And then the committee sort of racks and stacks, if you will, the the top three from all the departments. So it's it's kind of a department's first shot at their top three. And there's also a lot of projects on here that show up year after year after year because they remain important and they don't get funded. That's a pretty common, common theme that we see. And the committee itself is made up of several people, like, you know, myself. There's a couple of folks that are, you know, community involvement that have actually been on the committee for quite some time. The city CFO, um, Matt himself, um, there's a couple, um, there's Alderman, Alderman Jettie is is on there. And the city controller, I think, is also on the committee. So it's it's not the only planning person is myself, but there's there's financial people, community folks, and then some planning staff as well, so. But in general, yeah, I've gone through the process several years. There also, the process has has some important um, need for getting grants and things to outside of the typical budget. Because a lot of the grants that the city may apply for, for grant funding, require kind of sort of a or or benefited from a rigorous process of review of the projects by multiple stakeholders and input type people, so. So that even though not everything gets funded, the the plan does provide some some support for grant writing and things like that, right? So, yep.
And I would just add on to that, it is also critical for bonding of any projects within the city. It's critical to have a CIP committee rating in order to bond a project. And it also informs our bond rating as the city. Uh, we have to provide a capital improvement plan as part. We have to provide a capital improvement plan as part of our bond rating process, and we've been getting much better in that realm as well. So it's a critical piece of our financial picture.
Right, and I'll add, one last thing is, is the rating, again, is, is an input to decision-making by the mayor and the Board of Aldermen. It by no means limits or, or, or requires those city decision-makers to, to follow it, per se. And it's, it's actually not uncommon for lower-rated projects to potentially be funded. You know, sometimes it depends on availability of funds and where they're coming from and, you know, other, and grants and other things like that, so. So, you know, all that kind of goes into play, so. So, anybody have any questions on it?
Alderman, Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Should I direct specific questions to the department heads rather than yourself, Matt?
You can, you can take a shot with me.
Yeah.
But I'm not, I'm not certain I'll be able, I'll be able to answer the questions.
I have one very general question.
Sure.
And then a few specific ones. What is the process? Actually, I'll make a very specific example. So there's an A-one fire department maintenance, and then I think there's an A-two alarm system for the fire department. So there's two fire things. When you're going through that process, what determines A-one versus A-two? Because in my mind, I've been talking to the fire department, I feel like the alarm system is pretty important. So obviously, maintenance is important too, so where is that? How do you guys do that?
I think there, there are two critical inputs, one being the ranking that the department head actually provides us with. They present a top priority project. Alderman, Kathy, that tends to be the, the higher weighted input, if you will.
Okay.
And, and there may be reasons why Chief Buxton presented the deferred maintenance as a higher priority in the alarm system. I, I share your experience that he's very interested in doing, in doing both projects, and I would say generally for all departments, all of their projects are of very high need to them, albeit whether they're ranked A-one or not. I would also say, though, that the committee does look at the projects and identify what they believe to be the most essential. And so although they take that input from the department head and very much rely on it, they do weigh the projects from a department against each other with an interest in providing, really, as many departments as possible with a highly ranked project to the process.
Okay.
Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, no, that was, that was great. The, I noticed the library plaza was on there.
Yes.
We're still seeking a grant for that as well, to get that taken care of, or?
I would say broadly, we're seeking funding for that project. We have some design funding available to us, we've sought other funding over the past few years, but we have not been able to secure it. There are several phases to the project. Phase one is approximately a million dollars, although we'll need a cost estimate for that. We do not currently have funding for that.
So the, this number that we're seeing here is if no funding comes in, this is what it's going to cost us?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't see this, and maybe it, it's in there and I missed it, but did, did DPW ask for storage for the trucks? I know they've been looking for having sort of a garage of sorts for their trucks, but I didn't, I didn't see it on the list, maybe I missed it.
I don't believe that specific request is in here. I'm not, I'm not, I'm hesitant to look, I'm not sure if it's in the documentation. I'm not sure if you can speak to that.
I, I can't speak specifically, I'm not sure if that was included. This is a, the department's put forward multi-year requests, so it's a, you know, for the current year and then a look ahead, a six-year total. So if it was listed, it probably would have been listed in a future year because clearly we're not in a position to do that next year. So, so some things, like me, me, me and the engineering and DPW, I've tried to break some things out over years, so it'll be multiple years, it'll show like engineering in the first year, you know, construction could be a year, it could be two years. So you, you really need to look at the six-year plan to have a better assessment of what we're looking at over a timeframe. But no, that's, that's why it wouldn't have shown up in next year's.
Okay. This is, last one. In the committee's opinion, is there any one project that is above all projects?
I can't speak for the committee, but that's not an analysis that they perform.
Okay.
No, I mean, the, the voting is very much, so it's, it's reasonably simple. I mean, it's, I don't remember how many there are, there's seven on the committee, I think. And essentially, our project information is submitted. We, we get that information ahead of time, you know, in a court of justice, and we can look at it. And then the, the department heads present their projects, if you will. And then it's really a go-around the committee, and your only votes are A, B, C, D, you know, and that with me, so. So you, you essentially vote A if you think it's, if it's essential related to safety, you know, things like that. So there isn't actually a mechanism to, to, to rank an A above an A, per se. If everyone does A, it'll, it'll be an A-one.
Was there any general consensus for how the committee felt about a particular project over once? Because I know if I'm in automatic chambers and I'm having a conversation, I can sort of gather a consensus of how much I think the room likes a thing or likes another thing and how that works out. But I might be a more intuitive person, so I don't know.
All I could say is the A-ones are the highest ranked.
Those, those are on fire.
Right, but we don't, yeah, necessarily.
The A-ones, there was very, generally, there was really close clustering on a lot of the projects, as you, you can see if you get into the actual votes themselves. The A-ones rose above all else. So I know there are multiple, and it's hard to, I know you're kind of interested in one, but I would say within even the A-ones, some of those have substantial federal or state or other matching funds. And so for that reason, it's kind of hard to place one above another. You know, obviously, the rehabilitation of tax UAA, you know, that's one for the airport that's critical, but that's substantially funded by FAA and DOT funds, and so the city contribution to that is tiny, if anything at all. And so I just would caution when you're looking at it, although the A-ones may appear to be all the highest priority, some require a larger city match than others.
Right. And the committee doesn't evaluate or doesn't base on cost, it's on the project's necessity.
So they're basically asking for a thing, you're finding out how necessary it is.
Yes.
And then rating it.
Correct.
On those two basic criteria.
Right, but we're not rating it in terms of.
Whether you think it's good or bad.
Or whether we think the city should spend a hundred dollars here versus there, kind of.
There's no debate at the committee level about the merit of the project, essentially. There may be questions, but as an example, not to pick out the city clerk, but this is a highly rated project. It's not the committee's job to say we don't need new election machines, right? That's, they typically come in with the information that says this is a mandate, this is why we need to do it, and then the committee ranks it on that basis. So there's a lot of, there's an assumption that what the department heads are bringing forward is, is accurate, and then the ranking happens subsequent to that. The cost is not something that's debated, other than to say some are more matched, or some are, some require more city contribution than others, but that's not factored into the ranking.
Yeah.
So I'll probably see you, or definitely this, in budget review, for sure.
You, you will see capital projects come forward as part of the budgeting process. This plan, yeah.
At that point, it might be more relevant to ask about roadblocks. Because I was thinking like, on this list of projects, as you were going through the process, did you foresee like, okay, that project might be a little bit more difficult to get through than other ones, even though it's a high priority? Or because of the digital process, maybe you guys didn't get what you wanted, or, I don't know. Maybe there was something where you're just like, oh, you know what, I don't know if that, I don't know if the project's going to, going to make the cut this year.
I would say there's a general sense on, on many of the projects. And to give you an example, the, the police department fencing and security that's on, it's an A-one project this year, has been an A-one for four to five years. And so there's, there's just not the political will behind that for one reason or another. And so I think every project, there's a, there's a variable sense of confidence in what its likelihood is to get funded. And as the chairman said, there are also projects that may, because of sudden availability of funds, whether it be ARPA or other federal dollars or state dollars, they may rise up the list from being a B or an A-two very suddenly. And that's not to say they're not a, an important project, it's just that they may not be an essential, mission-critical project for the city. What you often see within the plan, and this is not to single out a department, but a lot of the parks and recreation projects are sort of softer infrastructure. Those tend to fall to be lower-rated simply because they're viewed as amenities. That's not necessarily accurate, but they don't tend to compete well with hard infrastructure projects like, you know, improving the roads, which is something that most tend to value very highly. So, good or bad, that tends to be the shakeout of what happens.
Would it be something if we had really bad roads or really nice parks? Man, the roads are crap, but the fields are amazing!
I guess they would also, if you have the plan, on page four of the plan, you see the definition of priority categories?
Page four, man, I was all the way down to the bottom reading it, okay. Yep, I see it.
The numbered page four? So that's what, like an A, that's the definitions that we use.
Okay.
So like if, if a project is required to complete or renovate a major public improvement, remedy a condition that's dangerous to health, safety, welfare of the public, our projects will provide facilities for critically needed community program, you know, and then you could see B. It's, you know, all the way down through, it's, you know, D's only where they're saying, we're saying, geez, you know, we should, you should probably wait on this. Maybe B and C are all desirable, they're not, none of those are things that the plan is recommending you not fund if you can. It's, it's really the.
So in this process, as the planning, as a planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Is there ever a scenario where you would say, no, it's not a good recommendation? Because I, because it, it sounds, it's similar to what we do anyway. We have a lot of laws and land use codes that pretty hem us in on yeses and nos.
Yeah.
And this seems pretty similar, is there any sort of?
Mr. Barley? Yeah?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I can speak to that, having gone through this process quite a few times. I mean, my view is that, you know, particularly where we have a designated representative from the planning board that sits on the capital improvements committee, we are generally relying on that representative and the capital improvements committee more broadly to say, this is, this is the judgment we've made. I think it's really hard for the planning board to, to sort of second-guess, you know, those priorities because, you know, that, that process exists precisely so that people can go through this process with the standards that, you know, Scott was discussing. So in my view, you know, unless there was something really unusual that came up, or if Scott said specifically to us, or Matt said to us, you know, there was this issue that came up where there was a real division among the committee. You know, we, we couldn't come to consensus on this, you know, and it's sort of, you know, it's a, you know, up for grabs in terms of, you know, what the feeling is on that. Maybe in that case, we'd say, okay, as the planning board, we should sort of step in and say, let's look at this and, 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 you know, sort of give some input to the Board of Aldermen. Otherwise, my sense has always been, I'm going to, I'm going to look at the materials and see, you know, what the rate, what ratings have been given and, and go through it. But, you know, when Scott and Matt give us the background and can give us a sense of, you know, how, how decisions were made and the process that was used, you know, I'm not going to say, no, you guys, you guys were, you were wrong about those decisions, yeah. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I would echo Matt, it's pretty general consensus a lot. And there is a lot of year to year. I mean, I would say fifty percent, maybe as much as seventy percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Of the plan, if you look back, it's year to year. So the ratings continue and, you know, you kind of keep pushing them along and new things get put on, but. But yeah, generally speaking, the board, yeah, is, is, doesn't try to recreate the plan in this process. But if you have like super heartbreak over something, you know, you certainly bring it up and, you know, the, because the discussion here is also part of the process and gets, is available in the minutes and things like that, so. Mr. Meehan?
Yeah, I think I was, when I first read the document, I was just kind of overwhelmed by the levels and layers. But the more I read through it, and I went online and did some cross-referencing, it was, it's kind of an amazing process when you think about how it, how many factors is balancing out from funding, short-term, long-term, the different departments. It's really even kind of an amazing process to work here, it seems, and I, I feel like it's got us serviced really well.
Yeah, I mean, we've definitely, we've been doing it as long as I've been here, and a long time before that, I'm sure, so. But the general feedback is that it does well for the city and, you know, it's pretty well received by the, by the folks trying to make the actual funding decisions, you know, which isn't us, per se, but, so. So again, I think we do need, for some reason, this one's an approval and a referral, because it is our.
Yes.
It is our plan, so your motions here are approval or disapproval. And a, and a recommendation, right? It's a little specific wording, I think.
Yeah, so you, the, the vote should be to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan and favorably recommend the plan to the Board of Aldermen.
If you're in favor of it, obviously.
I would say mayor and Board, Board of Aldermen for full coverage.
Yeah, mayor and Board of Aldermen.
I'm going to abstain just because it's going to come right back to me, Board of Aldermen.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else have any discussion or questions?
Just discussion, I just want to thank the CIC for doing this work, you know, Chairman Leclerc and Director Sullivan. It's, it's quite a bit of work, but it is an important process, a very important process for the city, and it's planning, planning efforts. And, you know, it rolls around every, every year and, you know, it's always, from a department head standpoint, it's like, oh, great, here we go again, we've got to put this together. But it is, it is a very important process to do that and annually reset and provide that look ahead for the city's needs. So again, I thank the, thank the committee for their hard, hard work in ranking, ranking these projects, which are, which is never easy given the volume of need and competing interests, so I appreciate that.
Anybody else, or anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Barley? I'll make a motion. So I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital improvements program and to favorably recommend it to the mayor and the Board of Aldermen.
All right, so that motion to approve and favorably recommend twenty twenty-three capital improvements program, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay, that motion passes. Great, thanks. All right. I don't have any, I guess, Matt, are we expecting amendments? There often is amendments to this in the relatively near-term future.
I do expect, I do expect one.
Yeah, so you probably will see a couple other things get rated along the way in, you know, in the amendment process, so. Don't be surprised by that, is all I'm saying. So, anybody else have any discussion items that they want to bring up, or? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Anybody? Ms. Harper?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, so you have the motion to adjourn at eight twenty-eight, do we have a, well, we can just vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then that motion passes and we are adjourned. All right.